Good evening, yes, we're trying to... I've called the meeting to order and announced that the reason I'm sitting here is because neither the President nor the Vice President is able to be here this evening. So I guess I'm here because I'm the most senior member of the board. May we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Elder?
Present.
Mr. Hauser? Mr. Laser?
Here.
Mrs. Mays?
Here.
Mrs. Posar?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. George? Dr. Locke? Before the meeting began, we had an executive session that's excursioned to discuss personnel and legal issue. We have a presentation tonight in honor and in memory of Ray Mountjoy, who you may remember, I mentioned as one of my hit marks when I was giving my presentation a couple meetings ago. And Mrs. Swiger has something she'd like to read for him.
Good evening. I ask that you join me in a moment of silence for Ray Mountjoy, distinguished graduate of class of 1963. Ray was involved with many charities in his hometown of Latrobe and was very supportive of the Greater Latrobe Partners in Education Foundation and the Greater Latrobe School District Art Conservation Trust. He had a vision to start a student-chosen professional art collection with Greater Latrobe's art collection as the inspiration and did in his home in the Woodlands, Texas. Ray served as the Education Foundation Vice President and was a founding board member. Ray and his wife Pam served as the A-plus campaign co-chairs and led the successful $5 million campaign for the Education Foundation. Ray's leadership and generosity to his alma mater were unparalleled, and the new Creative Arts Corridor in the junior high school was named in his honor. Ray had a kind heart, charitable spirit, and an effortless sense of humor. Ray's leadership and vision will be missed, and we offer our condolences to his family and many friends. Could we please have a moment with us, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swiger. Mr. Naples, do you have a report this evening?
No, just to announce that we'll have approval of a tax assessment appeal that we previously discussed on the agenda next week.
Okay, thank you. We have no legislative report. Mrs. Mays?
Yes, thank you. First on, there is the enrollment report, and Mrs. Swiger, do you have any comments?
No, does anyone have any questions? I know Mr. Prempa normally does ask a question. It is attached for your review.
There are several agreements for approval next week. They will be agenda items, and pretty much they are yearly things. The first one is to approve the Eduphy Education Services Agreement for the next school year. The second, to approve the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Student Services Interagency Governmental Agreement. And then to approve the Westmoreland Case Management and Support Incorporated, that's WCSI Student Assistant Program, SAP, and Enhanced Services Lateral Agreement for the 2017-18 school year. And then also on the agenda will be to approve the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Work Discovery Provision Services for 2017 Extended School Year Agreement. And then to approve an affiliation agreement with California University of Pennsylvania. Those all have attachments. They are all agenda items. Does anyone have any questions on those? The next, as we do every year, we will accept the tuition rates for the 2016-17 school year. As listed, elementary $8,679.44, and secondary $8,833.69. That will be on your agenda for approval. And we have at this time three tuition students also for approval on next week's agenda. The next curriculum committee meeting will be Tuesday, September the 19th at 5:30 here in the CVC. And that ends my report.
Thank you. And next week, we will have on our agenda for finance, the Treasuries Report and the Payment Bill as we always do. And for the rest of the commonwealth's agenda, I'm just going to watch them take over and make the introductions and the presentations.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. We have Mr. Richard Kaski here with us tonight from Catanet-Foreti. He's going to review our 2017-18 premiums for next year. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Richard.
Thank you. And as before, this is just a brief overview. If anyone's interested in the full details, I'm more than happy to sit in over there, the program in full detail. With the property liability, the buildings were appraised. The increase issue is 1%. The overall premium is up $3,800, which is about 3.7%. General liability limits remain the same. Most of you know Latrobe, the mine subsidence issue. So the program does include mine subsidence under Earth Movement. However, there's a $50,000 deductible, which we'll address later in this presentation. There's also the law enforcement liability, which is included, and they've raised the expense coverage to $250,000. So it's expenses if there is an incident at the school. They've added that this year. The commercial auto is basically the same. The premium was down $16. The workers' compensation was the biggest change. So the best pricing that we received was from UPMC, which is a change from last year. Highmark's workers' comp program was purchased by another carrier, and their premium was about $15,000 higher than UPMC's quote. So so far, of the companies we went to, UPMC had the lowest quote. There is no dividend. However, the change in the current workers' comp program, they drastically reduced it, so there really was no benefit. For the workers' compensation, just a few items. The Experience Mod is down 0.82, which is down about 10 points. And again, that's a three-year rolling total of all the claims. So that's a good claim history for a three-year rolling total. Again, each year, one year goes off and one year comes on. The rate that's charged this year is 51 cents versus last year's 65 cents. So just a few adjustments. The school leaders' errors of missions, including the IEP defense expense. So coverage is the same. Premium came down about 5.1%. So again, coverage is the same, but there was a reduction in premium. The excess liability umbrella, which covers over the general liability, the school leaders' liability, the auto liability, and the workers' comp is down 15%. So coverage remains the same, but a reduction in premium. Student accident, same coverage, same premium. The travel accident, same coverage, same premium. Crime policy, same coverage, same premium. There was just a few personal changes, but again, the coverage and pricing stayed the same. Public officials stayed the same. And the cyber is the same. A few added benefits, they added the additional premium of $372. But again, basically, everything was the same on the cyber. Mine subsidence. So under the mine subsidence, through the DEP, which anyone can get, it's through the state program. The schools, the maximum limit you get for any one building is 500,000. So based on the plan of the junior high school, we've separated the sections into buildings to give us the maximum amount of coverage. So again, 500,000 is the max per section, per building. The premium's only $258 with no deductible. So instead of a $50,000 deductible, it's a zero deductible. And again, the additional premium for that is $3,800. So that's the additional change this year because of the mine subsidence. So last year, this year, the overall reduction is about $17,000. We're adding the additional $3,800 for the mine subsidence. So again, same coverage, if not better in some places, and a premium reduction, adding the mine subsidence about $13,000. Any questions?
Richard, I have a question about the mine subsidence. So when you say section of the high school, how many sections do we get?
So according, based on the appraisal, they have the building broken out, and they have values for each section broken out. So when the PSBA does their inspection, they give us a report, and each section is broken out. And I think it's based on when it was built, but each one has its own section and own value.
Okay, thank you.
And the junior high is separate from?
Yes, each, even though they're connected, technically, okay, they would say the most you can get is 500,000. But by separating it based on the appraisal that PSBA does, we can get 500,000 for each section. So it broadens the coverage.
I would just like to note that, like I noted this several years, several years ago, our workers' comp, our Experience Mod was well over one, and our premiums were closer to $250,000. So we've come a long way, and there's been a lot of new things put in place, a safety committee, and just some procedural things that have helped us to control those costs and make us more attractive into some of these carriers.
Absolutely. And again, some safety committee programs, you can't always say, you know, there's a 5% savings for that safety committee. So that's straight off the top. However, the additional savings you get based on the Experience Mod and based on competitors coming in and quoting it, you know, it's hard to put a value on that. But again, we've seen it over the last seven years, the reduction premium.
So overall, we have a reduction of around $13,240 that's included in the budget, and we recommend moving forward for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, next on the agenda is the adoption of final operating budget. I have a brief presentation to share with you. Okay, you guys can find where you are if you want.
Do you see?
I can see. I know each of you have seen this plenty of times. We've been talking about this final budget, it seems like, for forever, especially at the finance committees. I know that we spoke about it last month with the full board, and we're speaking about it again, but I just wanted to remind everybody, we start this process back in October of 2016. So it's been gone over and gone over by many different committees and many different administrators and faculty members to talk about it. So here's what the finance committee is recommending. We're recommending an expenditure budget for 2017-18 school year of a little less than $55.5 million. $55,436,188, okay? It's a $615,000 increase, or a little over 1%. So keep that number in your mind for this next slide. Our increase is $615,000, okay? Summary of changes. Peasars retirement alone, just that budget line item, is going up by $644,000, okay? Or a 9.3% increase. It went from 30.03 to 32.57. And I wanted you to keep that other number in mind, because you're probably thinking, well, it only went up by $615,000. How did Peasars go up by that much? It accounted for 105% of our overall increase. So if that budget line item was frozen, we would have had an overall reduction to our operating costs, which I think is pretty cool. Salaries. Salaries are anticipated to go up by $143,000, okay? This is an unusual year. Wages go up on average between a half a million and $700,000 a year just because of contracts that are put in place and that have been bargained. This year, we offered an early retirement incentive that helped us to control costs. So we're looking at less than 1% increase in our salaries. I wanted to note, we have 446 employees district-wide. This number assumes 12 retirements, as I mentioned, we have an early retirement incentive. Nine GLA members took advantage of it. In addition, one classroom assistant and two full-time secretaries retired. It assumes eliminating seven positions, okay? Five GLA physicians. Those five positions consist of one elementary music teacher, one elementary learning support teacher, a nurse, and two elementary classroom teachers. In addition, we're looking to eliminate a full-time secretary and a behavioral support position. We're looking to add nine positions to GLA. We've talked about adding a school counselor, so that would be a new position, that would be plus one. And we're also starting an emotional support classroom, so we'll have to add a teacher for that. We believe we can provide those services in-house at a lower cost and possibly generate some revenue from the district schools sending their students to us. Similar to what we've done with autistic support in life schools. We're also adding, we added a part-time secretary to the junior high, two classroom assistants, as two classroom assistants go to support the new emotional support classroom. Three personal care assistants. That number's fluid. It goes up, it goes down. We might not need all three. It depends on the student population and depends on the child's need. And then finally, one health room assistant. One health room assistant will replace the nurse position that was eliminated. So keep that in mind. Special education went up by $8,900, or about 4%. And its increase is based on what our projected student placements are for next year. You know, that's a moving target also. And then all of the other areas went down by $261,000, okay? Building budgets, which are, you know, supplies, textbooks, just services that they have provided, that went down. The building principals and the teacher leaders did a great job of really, you know, working their figures down. Debt service decreased. I'll get to that a little bit later in this slide, but we're proposing that we use capital reserve funds to pay a portion of our debt service budget over the next two-year period. Okay, so our expenditure history summary, not including Peasars retirement. Now, these are actual numbers. These are audited figures. So if you remove Peasars retirement, back in 2009-10, it was $47,196. 2015-16, it's $47,136. So basically, non-Peasars-related expenditures reduced by $60,000, or 0.13% during that six-year period. That's pretty neat. On the other hand, expenditure history summary, these are also actuals and audited numbers. Peasars retirement itself, in 2009-10, is a little over $1 million. That's what the budget amount was. It made up 2% of our operating costs. In 2015-16, it climbed to $5.6 million. It was 10%. So those are audited, those are in the books. We're sure of that. The increase was $4.6 million, which was 454%, and that was the increase of that six-year period. So if you're ever talking to somebody at the coffee shop and they're wondering why, you know, why didn't my taxes go up? You know, why, you know, why did the district's budget go up? I think that's it. I think it's pretty clear. So those were actual audited numbers. Now, if you look forward at our budgeted numbers for 16-17, it's projected to go to almost $7 million and account for 13% of our operating costs. Next year, almost $7.6 million, 14%. So just to remind you, it was $1 million, 2% of the budget. It's now $7.6 million, 14% of the budget. This is not something that's locally driven. It's a state law. The state government determines what these employer contribution rates are, okay? Now, we've been talking about it a long, long, long time. There's some things out there that they're reviewing, voting on. Hopefully, you know, it will impact this. What we're reading is it's not going to impact it immediately. It's more down the road. So we're going to be living like this for a while. Okay, let's take a look at revenues. Okay, 17-18 revenues. This number here assumes no millage increase. So what we have right now is $54,841.188. That's only a $20,000 increase. Our local revenue was extremely flat. I shared with you, historically, we benefited from natural growth. I get a report from the county every November that tells me what we've, our market value has increased, our sales value has increased. Well, this year, it was very, very minimal, okay? Normally generates about $100,000, $175,000 in new taxes. This year, that didn't happen. So local revenue is flat. I am accounting, though, in here for state to fund transportation, as it always has. There's talks about them not doing that. I've also included in here the federal government funding Title II. There's talks about them removing that. I'll talk a little bit about that as well. So we're only looking at $20,000 worth of new money. So how does the fund balance plan fit this? We're proposing to use the unassigned fund balance for curriculum purchases totaling $360,000. So historically, we have a five- or six-year rolling plan where we review different programs and buy curriculum for them. Well, this year, and when we do that, we normally need anywhere from $175,000 to $225,000, which is budget, okay? Well, this year, language arts and math fell all in the same year. Very expensive programs. So rather than increase the budget by $360,000 and increase taxes by $360,000, we're not doing that. We're using our reserve. We're leaving the budget line item as is, which is around $200,000. Because we know in upcoming years, it's going to be back to $200,000. So we're going to use the reserve for that one-time spike in that area, okay? We're also proposing to use restricted fund balance, which is our capital reserve fund, for debt service payments. So, you know, we're doing the new LES project, okay? And the way that we've structured it, we're going to use roughly $800,000 of this capital reserve fund over a two-year period. So $385 this year, which would be the 17-18 school year, and then 500,000 in the 18-19 school year. So I guess that's closer to $900,000. We've planned for it, and we have money set aside for that, okay? So rather than increase taxes, we're not doing that. This budget line item for debt service, as I mentioned, is flat. If we need a millage increase, that has nothing to do with debt service, okay? Budgetary unknown, state, federal, we see that every time. It's always uncertain. They're still talking about what our allocations are going to be, and it's June 20. They have to have a budget adopted by June 30. We don't know what they're going to settle in on. Cyber charter school. Last month, I talked about, we had two families move in, and between those two families, they had eight students that were enrolled in cyber charter school, which costs us $90,000. Now, we're trying to, you know, meet and greet and pull them into ours, because we think we can do better. I'm not sure if that's working, or when that'll work, or when that'll occur. But these are things that are unknown. We don't know. This stuff happens, and it's our responsibility to find the funding to pay for it. Special education, obviously a moving target. If you have one special needs student that works, moves into your school district, you're looking at probably hundreds of thousands of dollars. Mark knows that quite well, because we're transporting a lot of them, and it becomes expensive. Student enrollment, we're assuming a flat student enrollment. Future budget concerns. And this is going to tie to our recommendation for millage. So let's focus on these next couple of slides here. Future budget concerns. Peasars employer rate increase. The projected rate for 18-19 is 33.27, which is a $198,000 increase, okay? But let's keep in mind, in 2017-18, it was supposed to go to, I'm sorry, 2016-17, no, 2017-18, it was supposed to go to 30.62%. Well, they bumped us up to 32.57%. All of a sudden, we're looking at a half a million dollar floor, and we weren't planning for it. So the same thing could happen here. So we have to continue to be conservative. And I'll tell you, if you look at prior actuarial studies, they said our cap was going to be 32.5. 32.5% was the max we could receive in 1920. The new numbers are saying we're going to hit 34.5% in 1920. So we'll wait till next year to see what they're projecting. So that's definitely an unknown. Future capital projects. I'm not talking about the new LES project. We are talking about the senior high school, the junior high school, the other elementary buildings. We have $180 million in capital assets district-wise. We have a five-year rolling capital plan. Kurt's constantly looking at, sorry, Kurt, we're looking at roofs, we're looking at boilers, we're looking at HVACs. He knows we're going to be 20 years out on some of these things, where we're going to have to start doing some repairs, renovations, those sorts of things. We need to make sure that we have enough money available, so that we're not going to knock on the community members' doors saying, hey, our roof's cracking. By the way, can you give us some more money? We don't want to impose a punishment like that. So that's a concern that we have moving down the line. And then finally, state-federal budget allocation, as I mentioned earlier. They're talking about this today. Today, they're talking about this. State is discussing reducing transportation subsidy by 8.64%. We'd really like to know that, because if you're going to do that, that's going to impact $109 million, $109,000. The federal government is talking about discussing removing the Title II funding totaling $146,000. This is very impactful stuff. We need to know this, this information, and unfortunately, they can't share with us. Early retirement incentives. This year, we offered an early retirement incentive for the 2016-17 retirees. Nine members took advantage of it, resulted in savings of $600,000. It's unlikely that there's going to be an offering in 2017-18. We have a relatively young staff. We're not going to continue to get large amounts here. So, you know, what do you do next? You know, that's definitely a concern. It's an uncertainty. We're going to continue to evaluate and come forward with recommendations, but for right now, it's an unknown. Special education, uncertainty of student population, uncertainty of student needs and placements. That's pretty straightforward. Everybody is familiar with special education. Transportation. We negotiated our contract, Mark, years ago. We were able to negotiate a wage freeze in the 2017-18 school year. We're benefiting from that now. We know in 18-19, we're looking at a 3% increase. That 3% increase is roughly $75,000. So while it helped us this year, we've got to continue to plan moving forward. So those two slides lead to this recommendation. We're recommending that we approve a final budget of $55,436,188. It will call for a 1.75 mil increase. It'll take us from 89 mils, I'm sorry, it'll take us from 79 mils to 80.75 mils. The impact on the average homeowner for a 1.75 mil increase is $46 more per year. That's what it will have impact. Now, I've talked Peasars, Peasars, Peasars. I want everybody to recognize that we are not alone here, okay? Districts throughout the county experience the same thing. So Westmoreland County, Peasars millage impact. In 9-10, the highest millage rate in Westmoreland County was 82.88. The low was 63.95. The average was 72.95, okay? In 16-17, I'm sorry, GLSD was at 69 mils. In 16-17, the high is now 90, almost 91. The low is 72.4. The average is 82. It's grown over 10 mils. Greater Latrobe School District is at 79 mils. Where we rank, we have the fifth lowest millage rate in Westmoreland County, okay? So we're doing something right. So that's the note I want to leave you on. Are there any questions about this budget that we've put together, that we've shared with you? I'm happy to address any of those questions. If not, we'll take it forward to the June 27 meeting and request your approval.
What are you hearing from Harrisburg? What's the chances of them wanting to pass it before we have to?
I hear now that they are adamant about trying to get something done by July 4.
July 4?
Yeah, is what I read today.
It's going to happen before the hall?
Before the hall. Now, they're talking about basic ed and the level of basic ed that they've included in our budget's hand. So we're looking at transportation, we're looking at basic ed funding, we're looking a lot moving towards Title II. I mean, Title II, that's pretty significant. People blow that off, but...
So basically, they're forcing us to pass the budget with all those undid?
Yes. Yes, they are.
And would you, once again, tell us, we're raising taxes by 1.75 mils, but our budget is more than that, and we're taking the difference out of our savings?
Yes, so our shortfall is greater than that 1.75 mil. But what we always do, you know, you talk about, it's like football. You have your offense and defense and your special teams. Offense, it's go expenditures. Defense is your revenue. Our special teams are our reserves, right? So we're recommending that we utilize some of our reserves, our unassigned reserves, to help to offset our curriculum costs, and use our capital reserve reserves to offset our debt service, because that is eligible under the capital reserve guidelines.
And once again, I'd just like to remind everybody that you get to spend your reserves once.
One time, right. And that's why we've tried to identify those things that are one-time, non-recurring. And we know the $360 for the language art and the math, you know, we won't do that again. I know Dr. Tupper and Mr. Prempa have already put together a plan that separates those out, so they don't land at the same point in time. And the $385 and the 500 over the last two years, we've been talking about that for months and months, knowing that we're doing new LES, and how much were we willing to use from our reserve? So we're just following through with it. We were actually supposed to use a portion of it last year, too. It's supposed to happen over a three-year period. But if because we went no-mil increase, and we were very fortunate last year, we didn't have to. Any other questions? Okay, so the next item that we have on the agenda will be millage levies. So we'll ask... So we'll ask that the full board approve a millage rate of 8.75 mils. It's a separate resolution from the budget, okay? So it's the 80.75. We go from 79 to 80.75. The next item on the agenda would be authorized 2017 homestead farmstead exclusion. So, you know, we receive gaming money every year. We normally receive about $753,000. We're getting $754,711 next year, which is slightly more. Okay, this equates to a reduction to the assessed value of all eligible homestead farmstead properties of $1,136. So when you get your bill, you should see your assessed value of your property and your homestead exclusion, and it should list $1,136. What it means in taxes is that you pay $91.71 less in taxes. And it's the same for everybody. Everybody gets the exact same amount. So we'll ask you to approve that. Reenactment of Act 511 taxes. Last month, we approved those groups that were collecting them. Now we have to approve the actual tax. Act 511 tax, real estate transfer tax, generates $450,000 a year for us. Earned income tax generates $3.7 million a year for us. Per capita 511 generates $78,500 a year for us. Again, that's the $5 tax you pay if you're over the age of 21. Local service tax generating $68,000 a year. And again, I think it's important to note, Union Township did this several years back. That used to be a $10 tax. We got $5, Union Township got $5. Well, they bumped it up to 52. So Union Township now receives $47, and we still receive our 5. So that is the LST tax. We're also going to ask you to approve reenacting the per capita 679 tax, very similar to the per capita 511. It's still that $5 head tax for anybody over the age of 18 that also has an income level greater than $5,000. Extension of, we're going to ask you to approve extending the Section 125 cash benefit cap. That's where those individuals who are eligible for health care, if they do not take our health care, instead waive it, we would pay them 50% of the premium savings for medical dental and vision with a cap of $4,300. We'd ask you to reenact that. The district pays out roughly $325,000 in waivers, okay? If those individuals didn't take the waiver, we'd be paying $1.1 million in premium. So there's definitely a benefit to the school district. We have roughly 100 people who elect to take the waiver, so it's been doing a good job. The 2016, 17 tax exonerations. Each year, Union Township tax collector, Mark Portcar, provides me with this report and asks that he be exonerated from collecting this per capita tax. He is handing it over to a delinquent tax collector, and we use PAMS for that. This year, he is turning over around 1,000. It ranges anywhere from 1,000 to 1,200. Many of those individuals that he was unable to collect have either passed away, they did not even meet the income requirements, meaning they earned less than $5,000, or they are non-residents, meaning they're people who've moved from homes and apartments, people with permanent residence that are outside of the state, or students that have moved away from their parents, so they're no longer on the rolls. So we'll ask you to approve that. We will also ask you to approve the 2018 commercial real estate tax assessment program, appeal program. This will be our third year. We're recommending not changing anything. We'd go after commercial properties, you know, that result in a difference, where there has a difference of $30,000 or more between the actual sale price and the reduced market value. So there's no change there. I did want to share with you, 2016, this program generated $66,000 more in real estate tax collection. In 2017, it generated $5,700 more in tax collection. Those two combined generate $71,833. So over a 10-year period, we're going to be generating $718,000 more than if we didn't just pick this program. And the other interesting piece, there's still $237,000 worth of appeals still outstanding that they're working through. So that number could grow, okay? Their fee is they take 30% of any additional revenue generated, but only in the first year, and we get everything else until the end. The next item we have is gifts, grants, and donations. The Greater Laitrop Partners in Education Foundation granted us $250 for cultural enrichment and special education, $9,725 for free enterprise scholarships, summer science math, $300 for Celebrate Innovation Grant, $2,500 for multi-century math professional development, $1,000 for teacher appreciation dinner. Herff Jones granted us $2,000 for the teacher appreciation dinner. And I wanted to highlight this, I thought this was very neat. We had a resident, her name is Krista Brown, who contacted our food service department, and she wanted to donate money to help to reduce any outstanding or delinquent food service accounts. She wanted to know, "Is there anybody out there who has a delinquent account, and can I help pay towards them?" So she donated money towards that as well. So we were very grateful to her, and thank her for that. The finance committee minutes are attached for review, and I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mary. I have to say that no matter how many times I sit through this or look at the papers, that Peasars number still blows me away.
Yeah.
And also, I'd like to thank you for the managing that you do with these numbers.
You're welcome.
It's wonderful that you manage so well, and you do it in such a way that I can understand it, and I'm grateful for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser also was unable to be with us this evening, so we're going to begin his section of the agenda with an LES update, and that will be managed by Mr. Thomas.
Yes, tonight, for our first progress update on the new LES patrol. I mentioned, buddy, we have boards, there's an employment group, the paint conscious, and access architecture, U.S. The update status of where we stand. Gentlemen? What's yours?
This is our first update of the elementary school project. As you all know, I'm sure you've been by the project, you see that we're finally building a little momentum with mud tires. The site demolition, as you saw in that picture, was our stripping of the topsoil. But our site demolition is nearly 100%. And I say nearly, because there's a few little items that are remaining. Some of the trees outside of the secure area still have to come down. But you can go through this list of items here on the project summary, and you can see that we've made some really big progress. This bottom-right picture is the BMP, best management practice. That's our underground storage tank for all of the rainwater, well, it's one of our underground storage tanks, for all of our rainwater that's going to be collected on the site. Comes to one of these type units, and is stored there until it can be leached into the ground or distributed slowly through a carefully designed process that lets the water run off at a manageable rate. That's a rate control system.
So basically, the bottom line is, when the project's finished, we release the rainwater that was on the site at a lesser pace than what it was before we started. So it was a grass area before we started, and when we're finished, it's going to release it at a slower rate.
I just wonder what those big orange things were. That's all. I drive by them every day.
You won't see it anymore. It's under a couple of feet of stone now. We're getting ready to use that for a storage area, a laydown area, prior to its end use as a parking lot.
This is the thing, this type of system is required to hopefully eventually stop getting all of these flash flood warnings we've been getting.
Yeah. Pretty cool.
So that, plus, we've already made our sanitary line connection into Cherry Street, and within the next month, we'll be making our sanitary connection on the Winkin Avenue side as well. We've already got plumbers working inside the building footprint, because obviously, our masonry is just starting this week. We've already got electricians running feeder branches in the footprint of the building, so we're getting geared up for our brick mason, our block mason, to start. In fact, his equipment showed up today, and we'll establish an area which will be his point on the whole project to feed material to the rest of the project and start our coming up out of the ground. It's a big point in the project to get the block up to foundation height, so that we can start pouring our slabs and...
So I have questions. The top side of the footer?
The top is the first section of footers that was, were being poured. And right now, we're at about 75% of the exterior footers, the perimeter footers. And we have a good percentage of the interior footers already poured as well. So in between raindrops...
You can see that when you're driving by, it's all leveled.
Right, it's hard to see. Finally, huh? We kept plowing it up and turning it over.
Just moving.
The site was, you had some areas on that site that had over 18 inches of topsoil. I don't know if you realize what that does to the soil below it, but when you have that much topsoil, it just sits. And it sits and soaks through. So we opened up an area of earth that was just soaking wet. And to get it to dry, there's a couple of ways you can do it. You can buy $100,000 worth of lime and work it into the project, but, you know, even that has its limitations of what it's going to do for you. We decided to work on it by disking it, like a farm. Opened it up, let it air out, keep beating it, beating it, beating it. You saw it happen three times. It was carefully planned. It wasn't something we wanted to do, but it was one way we could accomplish getting a dry building pad. I think we've gotten there now. So we've passed all the tests that our quality control for soils techs have put on us, and we're now at a place where we can go ahead and do all the footings and start grading on the inside of the building to put our stone down and start the concrete, which, once the block works up, it accesses form for the exterior of the building, we can start pouring our concrete inside the building very soon. But those orange things caught a lot of the neighbors, and really got them talking about, "What are you doing? What are those things?" My barber's mentioned it to me today. "I want to come down there and see this." I said, "You better hurry." The electrical contractor, he's, you can see his, that's inside the building footprint already. So all of the power coming to the building comes into that box on the left of that picture, where the conduits are radiused out of. That is where the conduits from the primary feed come into the building and feed up. This electrical contractor, pretty smart guy, figured out that if he put in a little base like that, it's easier for his men to turn, to make that big radius to bring it up into the building. So he poured that off-site, brought it on-site, set it, and lands all of his pipe from the primary duct bank, the emergency duct bank, into that area. And now he's, you know, a big part of the way onto having all those connections going out. That one's leading off into a D-wing section. The pipes on the left, the two on the right are going to lead over to the AB wing, over near your gymnasium and your cafeteria area. So all of this stuff is carefully laid out. What we haven't been able to do because of the rain has given us the opportunity to do pre-planning. So all of this stuff is done. He's even gotten most of the devices and stuff that you put into the walls. You see that row of devices on the wall beyond Dan? All of those are already established, and he'll just come out and set them where they turn up the wall. He'll set them into place, and you'll build right around them. So he's been doing that work off the site. Saves him some money, made him able to be the low-bid contractor and not have to cut a corner. So he's doing all that back at a climate-controlled area where everything can be done, you know? He'll probably even come out with the devices in. So when I'm filling out the schedule, it just makes me want to beat myself on the head and say, "Well, he's already doing devising, but that wasn't supposed to be done until after the drywall was done." You know, it's a nice problem to beat yourself over the head on. This stone that you see on the bottom picture is the rainwater system, another part of the rainwater system. That's the very large pipe. Those pipes underneath there are 36 inches around, and they are all connected to the inlets that will catch all of the water that falls anywhere but the roof. No water on this site will travel off without going through a conveying system. Period. That's the way the engineers have designed it. So, you know, all that's exciting stuff, we're really getting ourselves going here now. And like I said, the first concrete poured was 24th of May, and we're already 75% of the exterior footing. 400-some-odd cubic yards just in footing. Our work anticipated, if you can go ahead to the next one. That's what I just went through, so we probably, you'll probably want to jump through that. Site storm, we're, you know, we're going to be at 80% by the end of this month. Our footings will be 100% done. Our masonry will probably be 65%, 75% done to grade. So all these things are, you know, tremendously exciting for the progress of the building. Once we can get it up out of the ground, you'll start seeing blockwork going up in the next couple of weeks that'll be going as tall as our gymnasium walls and stuff. We'll be working towards that end and getting all the masonry bearing established, so that at the same time, we're doing the steel structure in the wings that are mostly steel-structured, it can all be covered at the same time, get our roof on, almost simultaneously.
So hopefully, we'll start having some more exciting pictures to show.
No, these are very exciting.
These aren't exciting? Spoken like a true Star community.
These are the most exciting. Next page, please. All right, these are our submittal process. Another thing that's been going on in this rainy season is that we've had, how many is it, 348 returned? Oh, there's total submittals, but 363. If you'll notice, our average turnaround for an engineer, for me to receive it, me to send it to an architect and an engineer, for the architect and engineer to determine who's to see it and get it in their system for review, and get it back to me so that I can send it back to the contractor, it's been seven and a half days. And that includes weekends, holidays, whatever. This is how fast the program that Mr. Thomas decided to use for this new forma is helping get this information turned around. It's all done on the web. It's turned around so fast, seven and a half days, that almost all of these products can be bought by the contractor within seven and a half days of saying, "This is the one I wanted to submit."
It's an important process, because it reduces any delays and any future problems that may happen in the project. The number's on paper, but there's a lot of work behind that to review these submittals and make sure they're meeting the intent of the dominance.
Yeah, it's a quality control process, and it's helping. And the same thing goes with the RFIs. Now, you'll notice here, it says that there are 339 total RFIs. The only problem with the new forma that I've seen so far is that it included the 230 RFIs that we used to help get our construction... two-hundred-and-thirty RFIs that we used to help get our construction documents to the point where we were going out to bid. Those two-hundred-and-twenty-some-odd RFIs were all done before January sixteenth, when we received the bid, February sixteenth, whenever it was that we received the bid. That means that we've only had to have sixty or seventy after that.
All right, so the chart shows the giant spikes are the pre-bid RFIs, and then the meandering line is what's been coming in during construction.
So it's pretty impressive there, too, because you can see, again, the average turnaround time, five days.
I like the next slide, the average requested time for the contractors. They want their answers in less than minus a half a day.
I'm not quite sure how this new forma came up with that number, and I am definitely going to go look at it after I've pulled up this chart, but that's pretty funny. Overdue RFIs, zero. RFIs due in thirty days, zero. So what we're doing is we're staying on top of this. The team's talking. The entire team is talking. All the construction people are talking to us. We're talking back to them. We're getting this done in good time. So it won't be because they didn't get their answers. They can't blame that, can they? That's why the momentum on the job's picking up like it is. We're not sitting around looking to point fingers. What's next? Project issues. Ground was so extremely saturated that we're trying to overcome inertia on a mud field, but we've done it. We're backed off of that. There's no more reason now that we can't continue to keep coming up out of the ground. Every good day is a day that they're going to be working. Our contractors missed a day last week because the rain made up for it on Saturday. That's kind of hard to see. I wish I could blow it up, but if you could see it, you'd know that we are sixty thousand dollars in change orders that were deduct change orders from the contractor, which is always a good thing to do, start out your project with three deduct change orders. But everything else on the project is just going, you know, just like this. Everybody's communicating, it's going to be a great project, you're going to have a beautiful building, all the men are excited about, and women are excited about, the project, you know, getting underway and coming up out of the ground, and it's going to be something for the people to see. I think they'll be real proud of it. I know I'm going to be.
So the bottom line is, it's early on in the process, but we are still on schedule and on budget, and we don't see any large pickups in the foreseeable future here.
Anything else? Huh? Not sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Also, on the agenda next week, we'll have the renewal of two fatal contracts, one with OZ Enterprises, which are energy management systems, a small increase of roughly just under three percent from last year's contract, and then a eastern elevator, which is our maintenance for all our elevators in the district, with no increase in pricing there. Also, my meeting minutes are attached as well from our June eighth meeting, and we're not having a meeting in July, but we'll have one on August tenth at three o'clock. How is that?
Thank you very much. Our student activities will have a very exciting presentation at next week's meeting, and also we're announcing that Steeler Night will be Friday, August fourth, which is before our next board meeting. So it's going to be the biggest, best Steeler Night yet, and we hope to have the prowess that we always have with Steeler Night. Is there anything you'd like to say, Mr. Mears?
Praying for no rain.
Okay.
Amen.
And Dr. George also is not here, and on the agenda for his section of the meeting will be the free and reduced price new policy, the national school breakfast program, national school lunch program, approve a memorandum of understanding with the City of Latrobe Police Department, and approve a memorandum of understanding with Pennsylvania State District. And those are attachments for the board members. And the next park and rec commission meeting will be Thursday, July twentieth, on the thirteenth in the building. Mrs. Ray?
Thank you. There's a summary of the WIU board meeting minutes passed from the May twenty-third meeting last month, and the next committee meeting will be next Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, in the WIU boardroom. Okay, thank you. Mr. Music?
Thank you. The EWCTC Joint Operating Committee meeting minutes are attached on May twenty-fourth to your agenda, and the next EWCTC Joint Operating Committee meeting will be Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at seven p.m. in the EWCTC building.
And we have the senior recognition ceremony for the students from the EWCTC, once again at our auditorium, and I thought it was very well-received and well-done. And many of those students get nice scholarships and honors for the work they do at the school, and I think that they're also very proud of attending that school and being part of that program, and it's always good to watch that come to fruition for them. Board policy, we'll be approving three new policies, and one, two, three, old policies which have some minor changes that will be part of next week's meeting as well. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Ms. Elder. I would ask the board to approve the summer technology intern at no cost to us, Anna Hawthorne from St. Vincent, and also approve the Morfo Trust USA services agreement, which is our fingerprint printing depart system. And the next tech meeting is Tuesday, September twelfth, here at CSC at six p.m. Thank you, Ms. Elder.
Thank you. Mrs. Ryder?
Next week, I'd ask the board to do the annual resolution, giving permission to realign staff as needed. Also, approve resignations of dramatics directors, Mr. Crack, Danny Crack, as well as business education teacher, Jamie Kelp, who has taught at the junior high school. She did not submit her resignation or retirement in time for the end of the school year, so that is why it's added to the agenda for June. Approve Carrie Hudeoff as the replacement art teacher, Jennifer Albright as school counselor, Kenneth Payloff as health and physical education teacher, and Kelsey Wolf as music teacher. And those are all replacements or retirements. An annual resolution to approve on-road driver education instructors for the seventeen-eighteen school year. There are no new people added. These five people are consistently the faculty who do the on-road instruction at our senior high school. We'd ask the board next week to approve our annual resolution for the teacher leader positions for the seventeen-eighteen school year. You'll notice that some do say "shared." That means that more than one person had applied for a particular teacher leader position, and upon approval of a principal, that position has been shared, so obviously, monetary compensation would be also. We'd ask the board next week to approve two support personnel appointments, one classroom assistant, Joyce Slazak, and one health room assistant, Heidi Peters, as well as a cheerleading club assistant coach, Jamie Hodge.
Thank you.
Agent, thank you. Allison Duda and Catherine Richards as co-dramatics directors, which are replacing Mr. Crack. Next year also, or next week also, and it is an attachment, we would ask the board to approve the supplemental fall sports coaches and salaries. As you may recall, in the past, we have, on an annual basis, approved all of the coaches for the entire school year. We have found in doing that that oftentimes changes occur after each season or before the next season. So we have decided that we will do this on a per-season basis. So come October, November, we will do the winter sports coaches, and in the spring, we will do the spring coaches. So what you have in front of you as the attachment is the fall sports coaches and salaries. We'd ask the board to approve the summer athletic department intern from Slidery Rock University, Jamie Baron, as well as a dietetic intern with Jillian Malloy and Rachel Allison from Seton Hill University. We'd ask the board to approve the classified personnel hourly rates of pay. These are also a resolution on an annual basis for this for the seventeen-eighteen school year. As noted, the sixteen-seventeen rate is there, and the proposed seventeen-eighteen rate is there. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but we did have a conversation amongst the supervisors in each of these areas as to the need and difficulty of getting particular substitutes and so on. And we also asked the board to approve a resolution, which is a memorandum of understanding for the Greater Latrobe Education Association, to hire a long-term substitute for the seventeen-eighteen school year for the position which we just noted, that we just received the retirement on, and that was Jamie Kelp's position. Because of the lateness of it and the need to really investigate clear pathways and the needs of certifications, we ask that we can possibly have a knock on the subject for one year since the schedule's already done, and then evaluate that position and hire next year, and this memorandum of understanding gives the degree to that with the school. So those are the resolutions under personnel. As noted by, I think, Mrs. Elder this evening, there is no board meeting in July, however, our voting meeting for June will be next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, and then we reconvene for our August meetings on Tuesday, August fifteenth, and Tuesday, August twenty-second. Obviously, we know that August twenty-second is after our teachers have already returned, so we will be doing probably some hiring on the fifth. We appreciate everyone's participation in graduation and...